I'll just call, I'll call the meeting back to order. Are we all in now, Jim? The planning board meeting, uh, April first, two thousand twenty-one at six oh eight. We don't need any alternates and the approval minutes, we're still waiting on the minutes, so we'll bypass that. And we'll go right to old business, which is Greg Martinez, Iron Tales, five, five, nine, Route one oh nine, map one four eight, lot zero, zero, one. Conditional use application, the applicant is requesting modify an existing conditional use permit to include outdoor entertainment. And I guess now I'll hand it over to Mr. Martinez. I think Greg's on me.
How's that? Is that, everybody hear me? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, yes, uh, obviously scheduled public hearing, uh, following, uh, our early meeting, uh, where I have applied, uh, to adjust, uh, change my or update my conditional use permit to include uh, the outdoor entertainment. Uh, I have had outdoor entertainment, as most of you know, and I said in the previous meeting, I've been doing outdoor entertainment, uh, from the day I started way back in May of two thousand eleven. And unbeknownst to me, it wasn't part of the conditional use permit, so here we are. Um, I have proposed, I, uh, putting, erecting a couple of fences, as some of you or all of you know, uh, to help, to help buffer some of the sound leaving the property. Now, my goal is to continue, I can, to continue to meet the noise ordinance, um, of which, you know, the readings I took last year, I was always in compliance. Uh, I primarily do my outdoor entertainment during the daylight hours, but I have also asked that I, I am allowed to, uh, do some bigger shows that would go into the evening. All my entertainment going forward will end by ten P M. And these bigger shows where there was a likelihood that I may, may be beyond the noise ordinance, uh, that will have to go before the selectmen and I would, uh, I would apply for a mass gathering permit as those opportunities arise. Um, all I can do is perform and be judged on my performance thereafter. I did consult with, uh, some, uh, sound engineers and I don't know, I submitted, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I did, uh, I, I, I did, uh, consult with some sound engineers about, uh, the situation, about my noise and things that I could do to, uh, improve keeping the sound on the property. Now, I forwarded and I can't, I, I, now I'm uncertain that none of you rece, any of you received the email that I forwarded from the sound engineer. Uh, did you all get it? Because I forwarded it through the code office, I don't know, about four or five days ago.
I got it.
You did? Okay. Okay. So their position is the fence that I intended to erect, the larger fence, the twelve-foot-high fence, is going to really do nothing for me. So I have amended that plan to be an eight-foot fence. And, uh, all I can do is, you know, self, self-regulate, self-regulate and make sure that I operate within the, the ordinance. So if I, I'll field any questions, if anybody has any questions or specifics.
Right. So thi- this is, uh, John Qua, um, just to confirm, um, we know the largest.
Sorry to interrupt. This is Ben Smith, the, the contract planner for folks. This is, uh, the public hearing, uh, for Iron Tales is this evening, so uh, we want to give, uh, members of the public who are with us this evening a chance to ask questions to the chair or make comments to the chair, and then the chair will allow the applicant to address those. And, uh, if there's any new information or questions that come up, uh, the public will have another opportunity to, to ask clarifying questions, but um, I, I think at this point, I'll, I'll turn it over to Chris, the chairman, and, uh, you know, make that official ask of folks who are here this, tonight to talk about Iron Tales, to, uh, go ahead and raise their hand and be recognized by the chair and address comments and questions to the chairman. Thank you.
My apologies.
Thank you, Ben. Um, yeah, it's gonna be a little difficult. I got two pages, so if anyone has a question, I'll have to scroll through, so I'm gonna leave it a public comment.
You have one hand raised.
Yeah, I see.
My name is Sister Claire Lambert. Um, we have the abutting property to Iron Nails. We're right on the pond. Uh, and I'd have to say that, you know, even though it's been allowed in the past, we really consider it, um, not a restful situation when we have music coming through that is not of our choice. In a way, it's, it's like noise pollution. I don't know if others feel that way, but we look to having a quiet atmosphere right on the pond. And when the music is blaring out the way it has been in recent years, um, I know it's been hard on our older sisters who go there for the quiet. And I'm representing them this evening, just to make clear what our position is.
So, yeah, so.
All right. Thank you for your comment, Sister. I'm gonna have, uh, Mr. Martinez, if you can comment back to Sister.
Well, there's not a whole, whole lot I can say to her. That's gonna change the feeling, uh, uh, that it, that's noise pollution. I, all I can say is that I, I will, you know, I, I will work hard and diligently to continue to operate within the sound, you know, the sound ordinance.
Any other questions or concerns from the public as well? Uh, Lawrence, Lawrence Wa- Walsh, is it?
Yes, we have the property that abuts directly behind the Iron Tales. And Sister Claire lives to our right, so we're even closer to you got to the Iron Tail Saloon than Sister Claire. We have the exact same opinion as Sister Claire. There's no such thing as a restful weekend at the be, at the lake right now. We've ended up having to leave almost every weekend to even have any peace and quiet. To the point where the doors even rattle on the house at the camp. And we definitely don't support this.
We, we've kind of tried to tolerate it because we didn't think we had any options. But at least I knew that at five o'clock, I could go home and maybe have a quiet dinner and sit on my porch. Um, every Saturday and Sunday afternoon that I'm home, I leave town. And I shouldn't have to do that. I can't have my family over to enjoy a quiet picnic on my lawn on the weekend. I can't do it during the week. They have jobs. I can't do it on the weekend because it's blaring. And there have been days when my little door actually vibrated from the sound. Uh, and so I just leave and now you want to extend that till ten o'clock at night? When my grandchildren spend the night, am I supposed to say, okay, no bedtime tonight until ten thirty or eleven? You know, it, it, it's, it's a residential neighborhood and we'd like to keep it that way.
And we have called the sheriff and he told us there was no noise ordinance, so he couldn't do anything about it.
There is, uh, as you all know, there is in fact a noise ordinance. And, uh, the the measurements that I took last year were within the noise ordinance. And also I am not looking to, uh, go till ten P M every night. That was off by special permit to do a bigger show, uh, potentially four times over the course of a season. Up to now, all my entertainment has, all my outdoor entertainment has ended at five P M.
Okay, but that means Saturdays and Sundays, I have to leave town for peace and quiet. When do, when do I get to enjoy a weekend at my camp?
Excuse me, could you direct your comments to the chair?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We've all gotta get used to it, so we'll be fair. Any other public comments? Elias, Elias, do you have a comment?
Tell Elias, unmute himself.
You have to unmute yourself, Elias, I think. There you go.
Thank you.
Hi.
Jane and I have lived here for, since nineteen seventy. And, um, we've been in the, um, we're also a, a fairly, uh, close neighbor. We're about five hundred feet up the road. And, uh, actually, the, uh, the music is generally, um, aimed out at Route one oh nine. It is a commercial, uh, commercially zoned property. And, um, uh, you know, the, I, I've been very impressed by the fact that, uh, uh, the folks that, who are patrons of Iron Tales are very respectful. Most often, not always, but most often, they, um, uh, the noise that comes out of, uh, uh, from the motorcycles, uh, leaving Iron Tales is at a minimum. Uh, I can't say that for the other, uh, establishment up the road from us on one oh nine. Um, but generally speaking, uh, we've been very, very content with the, uh, with the respect that has been shown to the neighborhood um, on, on, along one oh nine and across over, uh, by the fairgrounds and so forth. And, um, uh, so I'm, I think that, uh, that Mr. Martinez and his organization has certainly, uh, been very, um, strong and striving to, uh, to be cooperative and to, uh, be understanding of, of the fact that, that people are, uh, are trying to enjoy, um, enjoy their lives. The, uh, but I think that, um, the fact that, that the property is zoned commercially, um, when the, um, when people purchase property in the area, and I've been doing that for fifty-two years here in this immediate area, um, they are aware of the fact that there are commercial properties, uh, in the area and, um, and understand that there, there may be some inconveniences as a part of that, but I think that they have been minimal with respect to, um, uh, Mr. Martinez and the way he has, uh, he has operated his business there very respectfully, uh, wasn't quite the same way with the previous owners.
Mr. Thomas. Anyone else for a couple of public comment? Yes, Sister Claire?
Um, I'd just like to respond to the previous comment. Um, when it was an indoor restaurant or pub, whatever, uh, there was a difference. You know, in that we didn't have the music exterior to the building. Um, and that made a difference. You know, it's only been in the past couple of years that we're experiencing this. I mean, uh, we understood. I mean, we had our property there when it was still, uh, part of the Apple Orchard Organization. So, I mean, it's, it's not like we're gonna move now that there's a different commercial enterprise. Um, I think it would be unreasonable specifically to extend those hours, especially on the weekends. I just find that it's, it's not in keeping. I, I can't imagine, but that the sound resounds over the pond as well. Um, maybe not to the extent that we have it, but I think there's a certain limit that should be introduced. And no different from what people have experienced with other, uh, areas where we have shows that get put on during the summer on the outdoors and the neighborhood lands up, speaking to the issue, and sometimes it does get addressed. But to extend it beyond what we're already experiencing, I, to me, it doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, Sister Claire. Any other comments from the public or?
I think if there's no other comments from the public, uh, the applicant should be given a chance to, uh, address some of those comments. And then if there's anything new that comes out, uh, or questions that, that, uh, are, uh, coming out of those comments, uh, might be fair to give the members of the public one more, uh, chance to make a comment or ask a question as part of the public hearing process.
Martinez, would you like that? Anything, excuse me?
Uh, probably nothing that's, uh, gonna, gonna change any minds of the people on the surrounding residential properties. Uh, just, uh, kind of to repeat that I work hard to ma, you know, stay within the noise ordinance and I am not looking to extend my extend daily event, daily shows. Primarily, I end up, I, I'm sorry, I end my outdoor music at five P M. I was looking to do a couple of bigger show, uh, uh, I'm sorry, about three or four bigger shows over the course of the season that would go into the evening and potentially could be beyond the noise ordinance. And I, I'm just, you know, like I say, I'm being forward and honest. Um, and these, you know, it, I was, I was unaware prior to this very moment that, uh, these folks had issues, uh, prior to, when, like I said, I've been doing the outdoor music for over ten years now. And, uh, you know, the noise levels have never been an issue until, until this past year. So all I can do is continue to, uh, you know, like the noise, the sound engineers said, you know, I would, I have to self-monitor and make sure that I'm within the noise ordinance. And that's all I can do. I mean, music, you know, outdoor, the outdoors is, is what my business is about. Live music is what my business is about and it has been. But, you know, we've always operated outdoors. And that's what people come for. And I certainly, uh, you know, I, I, I feel badly that, that folks can't enjoy their property. But in the same token, I got a lot of folks that enjoy my property.
At thi, at this rate, oh, we're gonna have to close the public part of it and we'll move to board discussion. Oh, uh, Lawrence Walsh again?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that we have called the bar several times about the noise.
This has been an issue. He, he did know because we have called him, we gave up a couple of years ago. But we have called him in previous years and asked him to turn it down. So he did, so he did know. You did know. We talked to you on the phone.
Specifically? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, I, 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 yeah, and I, and I'm not saying that you did not. I just don't remember people's folks' names. And I only, you know, over the course of my, my time there, for ten years, I've, I, I think I've had, outside of a couple of calls from the police, uh, the sheriff's department, I've had only two calls from local residents and perhaps that was you.
And the Sister Claire's point, this was never an issue till you started outside.
It, music in the bar is, you know, when we bought our property, we knew there was a bar there, but there were also a big, bigger buffer of trees and the previous owner chopped down a lot of those trees. And that made it worse. We appreciated that you didn't run it into the night. But there's, there's hardly any buffer between us, and I don't think an eight-foot wall is gonna help, but I don't know what, I don't know what else to say. When we bought our property, we knew there was a bar. We did not know there were gonna be outdoor bands every weekend or nearly every weekend.
And I, and I think Sister Claire would agree. It's ruined our property.
Uh, this is something, if we sell our property, th- this is something I'm gonna have to disclose to the new buyers, and this is going to hurt the value of my land.
Okay, thank you. At this moment, I'm gonna close it, the public comment down. Move to board discussion. I thank everybody for taking their time out. Any? Any questions or comments from the board?
I wonder where everybody else is.
Ben?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, um, wanted to remind the board, uh, that this was the, uh, this is the second time this item has been on the agenda. The first time it was on the planning board agenda was in February eighteenth. And at that meeting, there was, uh, some discussion around, uh, some potential, uh, considerations, uh, that had to do with the overall number of shows with uh, potential discussion on the hours of operations, or at least the hours of, uh, outdoor entertainment, outdoor music. Uh, I think that, uh, the board had also asked for some clarification around lighting, uh, of the outdoor space and, and how that was gonna be uh, planned for, um, uh, around the fencing requirements. And I'm not sure, uh, if the applicant, uh, maybe should address uh, if there's gonna be any changes, uh, to proposed lighting, uh, with the proposed changes to the fence. And, uh, I think finally there was also some discussion around, um, uh, the, the parking area shown on the plan. And I, I do have that plan, if, if you'd like to have that screen shared, um, at, at some point, Mr. Chairman, but uh, thinking about, uh, trees, uh, or some kind of plantings, uh, in, either in the parking area or at the, uh, I believe that corner of the property where, um, the, the fence and the stage met, kind of at the corner of, uh, one oh nine and the, and the side road there. Uh, so I, I think that that the homework was, was certainly gonna be, uh, you know, I had an expectation that there was gonna be some information from the sound engineers, uh, in particular. Uh, Mr. Martinez has shared, uh, some of those conversations with us. Uh, but I think that in addition to what we've heard from folks this evening, these were some of the items where we left off, uh, back in February. So, thank you.
Okay, I just wanna have the board look at, uh, page fifty-seven of one oh eight on the zoning ordinance pamphlet. And once everybody gets to that, I'll move forward to it. If you can let me know, please. And I'll read the, uh, paragraph so everyone else can hear it as well.
Is there any way to, is there any way to screen share that?
Uh, not, not, not. Not ready now, sorry, Craig.
Do you have it electronically now?
I enabled screen share for participants, so if you wanna try.
I'm not sure if Chris has it electronically on that laptop, though.
No, but I, 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 I'll read it, everybody. And if anyone.
I'd be happy to bring it up if you'd like. Just, just let me know how you'd like to proceed.
Well, let, let, just go ahead, read it and I'll just.
Has all, all the board members found it and whatnot? So, under findings, findings and purpose, it is recognized that people have the right to and should be insur- assured and environment-free from excess noise that may jeopardize their health, safety or welfare, or degrade the quality of life. This section is enacted to protect, preserve and promote healthy, safety, welfare and quality of life through reduction, control and prevention of excessive noise. And basically, that's the purpose of the overall noise ordinance. And Gavin, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that on the next page, page fifty-eight, the little chart that gives the decimal readings, um, it denotes that the commercial district should not exceed sixty decibels at the property line during the daytime and fifty decibels at the property at night. And perhaps we.
Well, he did.
Well, yeah.
Mr. Walsh, would you mind, uh, muting your microphone?
I was wondering about fence, why we're reducing from twelve feet to eight feet. Speed a little bit more about that.
That's Utah.
Seems to have potentially frozen. Come back.
I, I, I didn't get the question. I'm sorry. The audio is, is not, not working properly, I guess. Can you repeat the question?
Gavin, did you, Gavin, did you have a question for Greg? Cause I think you froze, didn't you?
Yeah, that's what it seemed to, that's what seems to have happened.
I, I think he was talking about, uh, why the reduction from a twelve-foot fence to an eight-foot fence.
Sure, yes, I was hoping, uh.
Froze again.
I think I've got the gist of the question, though, and, and the answer is simply because of the distance from where the stage is, this will be erected. It's, it's, it's too far away to be effective in, in dampening the sound. There, there is a three-foot knee wall that I'm gonna be putting around the pad that actually surrounds the stage that would prob, will do more than, than the, the, the larger wall. So that's, and, and obviously I, I proposed it, you know, I reduced it to eight feet.
Oh, with the knee.
I just not getting any of that. He's got a connection problem.
Jen, are you here? Can you help Gavin?
Yeah, Gavin.
Are you in the building?
Or, uh, Mike.
I don't know if you know Gavin, but you're frozen.
Gavin, close your Zoom and go come back into the meeting.
What I'm supposed to do about it?
Gavin, quit your Zoom and then come back into the meeting. It would fix it.
Mr. Chair, maybe while we're waiting for Gavin, would it be all right if I asked a question?
Yeah, and actually, could I ask, mind if I draw one out there so we can ponder on it? Is it, can, can we, Mr. Martinez effectively comply with the sound ordinances as he?
Can, can he demonstrate?
Can he den- demonstrate that he actually has tried to comply with the sound ordinances?
I should be all right.
What do you mean, can I demonstrate? I mean, I, I had a sound meter and, uh, I have, uh, take, I took several readings, uh, even, not, not even quite to the property line. Within the property line, but I mean, it's, it's my right. I mean, I've got phone video of it, eh, eh, of it being taken in, in the reading. But I certainly don't know how to share that in this, in this venue.
Okay, Ben, you have a, you have a question?
I, I think it was, uh, related to the construction of the fence. Uh, I, I can see that Gavin is, is back, uh, with us, so maybe I'll defer to him. He, I know that that's kind of where he was going with his question.
Yes, I was wondering what the height of the knee wall was.
3 feet. 3 feet with a, with a shelf on it of about 2 inches. So actually, the the concrete pad is raised off the ground, so, uh, 4 feet. But actually, actually, that would be irrelevant because the stage is on the same pad, so 3 feet. And that's at a distance of about 75 feet from the stage. And that will serve as a daffodil, if you will.
Yes, Pat?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, um, Mr. Martinez, how do you determine, um, how much noise comes out of a speaker? How much music is, I'm not familiar, so I'm just asking the question. So if you're gonna mitigate the sound, is there a way to turn it down a little bit?
Yes, yes, of course there is, and every, every time a band sets up, they've got their own equipment, and they have their own idea of what's reasonable, trust me, I know. And, uh, so I have to take readings, and my sound engineer is going to, he proposes to set me up with equipment that will indicate when the band is above the sound ordinance. And that would be constantly running during the performance.
So is it reasonable to assume that a band would like to have the music as loud as possible? They probably wouldn't want to, um, tone it down because that's what a band does? My two, is that what you're trying to say? They have their ideas?
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying, but I mean, if anybody that's been to a concert, usually the music is, is loud for all to hear. Uh, all to hear at whatever the venue may be, be, you know, the Freiberg Fair or the Civic Center. Uh, but what I'm saying is they all come with their own sound equipment. So I would have to monitor with my sound equipment, my sound monitoring, to let them know what level they need to be at.
So in other words, you can control this a little bit?
Yes, absolutely. And, and like I say, I have in the past. If I, you know, but to be quite honest with you, I never, I never had an opportunity, uh, to be above, be above the noise ordinance from the time that I started checking on it, until the time I got my monitoring equipment and could take a reading. And that was, that was probably uh, mid-season, maybe somewhere in, uh, late June, early July.
So I, I guess what I'm wondering, is there a way, is it reasonable to, to think that there's a way that there can be, um, no, I mean, uh, full transparency for, for what you've taken for measurements, so, so if you're I'm just trying to think of a way that you could work with the neighbors.
Right, understood.
With the people that are having a problem with this. I'm just wondering, is that, is that possible?
Well, I had, uh, I, I don't know if it was at the meeting, but I propose that we mark out my property line and make it, uh, make it known to members of the board, the code enforcement officer, the sheriff's department, to go in with their own equipment and take a reading when there's a complaint. I think that's the best way to handle it. I can go out there and I can take a reading and, and say it's accurate, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the, the neighbors are gonna buy it, or the neighbors like what they're hearing. So they would in turn call the police or call, make a, make a complaint with code enforcement. So you know, there would have to be obviously a third party that comes and takes a reading when there's a complaint, if and when there's a complaint.
So, Mr. Martinez, when I, I know, I know that we talked about this a little bit at the first meeting. Um, when I look at this, uh, um, on page 58, it has a little, um, a block on sound pressure level limits, and you talked about decibels. So in a residential area for daytime, can you, and I think you did this before, correct me if I'm wrong, um, 50 decibels would sound similar for, for those of us that don't really understand decibels. What, what, what would that sound like? Would it be a tractor? Would it be, like, what, what is 50 decibels?
Well, I wish I had those answers for you in my paperwork. I, I had those before. To give me, I mean, all that information is easily found on the internet. 50 decibels is somewhere near speech. Speech is at 50 decibels, believe it or not. And, uh, the somewhere in my submission. Like I said, the information, it's not, it's, it's, I don't think it's the issue of the sound. I think that, you know, the neighbors are, you know, their issue is the continuing sound. But like I said, you know, 50 decibels, it's not much at all. I think, I think a lawnmower is 90 to 120. Uh, I can look. I can take a peek at, uh, at the internet. Because like I said, I, I don't have that paperwork with me, but I did have the chart with me at the meeting.
Thank you.
Martinez?
Yes.
Is there any way that you could provide the board with any some documentation? I guess we're kinda leaning towards that.
Repeat the question, you broke up some documentation on what?
On any, any of the sound decibel readings that you've had.
Yes, yeah, well, I can, I can forward videos that I have in my cellphone. And, you know, the distances will be obvious. Uh, there's some that I'm standing right at the corner of the asphalt that goes to the rear of the property. And then the other is generally in the same direction, but out in the woods. Uh, I, I'm not sure, I don't believe it was quite to the property line. So just, if you give me an email or, uh, send me an email with some phone numbers, I can email it or text the video, or whatever.
I guess what I'm saying, we're trying to figure everything out, is that if we could get someone that's as, you know, a professional that can, with calibrated equipment, documentate it versus cellphone or, or whatnot, or a YouTube video, you know, you, you understand what I'm saying?
Well, it's not a YouTube video, it's a video from my phone where I was operating the sound, the, uh, the meter that I had purchased to answer, answer my questions about, about the sound level. So I, I guess what the board's gonna look for is, you know, someone independent of myself, is that what you're asking for? Because in that case, I mean, obviously, we can't, that can't happen until the next, the next live music show.
Dennis?
Dennis is muted.
Dennis, you have to unmute. Dennis, go ahead.
He's muted.
Yeah, I see it still. Jen?
Dennis, I think you can either, uh, click the microphone button down in the bottom left-hand corner, or even just press the spacebar, I think that'll temporarily unmute you.
Nope, still on, still on mute, Dennis.
Yeah, how's that?
Yeah.
There he is.
Now you can hear me.
Yeah, we've been-
I was just saying, normally when I speak, uh, the decibels have been measured, uh, on me. And I do exceed the decibel levels that's in a good neighborhood policy. That gives you some idea, uh, what you're looking at.
So, according to what I'm seeing here on the internet, and anybody can look at it, the average noise home is about 45 decibels. Office noise inside a car at 60 miles an hour is 70. Heavy traffic, window, air conditioner, noisy restaurant, power, lawnmower, 80 to 89. Um, chainsaw, leaf blower, snowmobile is at 106. So that, that just gives an idea of what I'm, what I'm seeing on the internet, just doing a quick search. So it doesn't take a whole lot of noise to, to get to 60. Like I say, 60 is normal conversation, or background music is 60.
Yes, uh, Gavin?
Yes, I would hope that the applicant would consider, uh, replacing some trees in the back of the property to buffer the sound. Um, and maybe provide a, a drawing of proposed plantings that, that could help with this issue.
The, the trees on the backside of the property, uh, well, since I bought the property, I have cut no trees. And the trees on the backside of the property are, they're primarily maples. Uh, I'm guessing somewhere in the area of 40 foot tall. Um, that would kinda be, uh, cost prohibitive to outdo that. I'm not real sure how planting more trees at the backside of the property would, would, uh, would change much. Because like I said, that, you know, the 12-foot high fence doesn't help. According to the sound engineers.
Perhaps we could add a lower hedge of thicker bushes like arborvitus that would help where there's not as many branches on those trees where the sound's traveling through the trunks. You'd still have the foliage at the top of the tree to help up there, but maybe something that would help to round, direct the sound upward.
I will certainly consult with the sound, the sound engineer and get some written documentation. If that makes sense to do it, if that is effective, I will certainly agree to do that.
Okay.
But like I say, I, I, I need to make sure it's gonna be effective, or, you know, it's, it's, it's an exercise in utility.
Absolutely. Perhaps the sound engineer would have other ideas that would help with this, other than vegetation or a fence.
Perhaps he, perhaps he would, uh, I, I think the information that he did give me via that email is, was based on what the plan was. So, and, and, you know, he just, uh, he pretty much is kinda narrowed it down to, you know, self-leasing. And self-monitoring, and he, he's, uh, he talked about the equipment that I could use to do that.
Have you given any consideration to the islands in the parking lot that may have vegetation to help break up the sound within the lot?
Well, are you still talking about the back lot? That, that, that's gonna be fenced in?
Yes, on the Milton Mills side.
In the back, on the backside of the property?
Yes, where you're proposed to have motorcycle parking.
Well, that's, yeah, that's gonna be all, that's all gravel parking, uh, you know, as it has been, um, since I've been there.
The, the ordinance asks that we have one island per 20 parking spaces. And I'm hoping that having some vegetated islands will help break up the sound as it travels through the parking lot. Maybe the sound engineer would comment on that as well.
I, I will, I will, I will specifically ask him that.
Pat, did you have a question? And I saw Ben had a question.
Um, go ahead, Ben, I'm looking for some information.
Ben, you're up.
Hey, thanks. I see John has his hand up as well. I, I don't know who was first, but I believe John was first.
Okay, John, go.
Oh, actually, Gavin, um, asked the question that I was gonna ask is, could Greg, um, get some opinion or, or some advice from the sound engineer? Uh, are there any other ways that, uh, either the vegetation or are there other ways that we haven't thought of that could help dampen the sound?
Yeah, uh, I will be contacting him in the morning, cause he's asked me to keep him updated on the progress. And so I will bring him up to speed on our conversations this evening and the requests, and see what he comes up with for me. And I will get, I will have him, you know, bring, you know, forward documentation. Is there any benefit, do, do you want me to forward my own sound readings, uh, the videos on, that I took on my phone? Is there any benefit to that?
I brought the more towards a professional sound engineering documentation. I mean, a cellphone, it's gonna change anything, as all of us would know.
No, I just, I, I just was recording the reading. I was recording my sound meter.
Oh.
While, while it was, you know, just as proof that I, I wasn't at my property line, and that I was taking the reading, the reading was videotaped, at, you know, obviously, you probably can hear some sound on, on the phone as well, on the phone recording. But, and like I said earlier, all that being said, if we're gonna, if I'm gonna bring a professional in to do a noise reading, obviously, there's gonna have to be, that it'll have to take place at the next event, which would be my opening weekend.
John's hand went back up, and then Ben as well.
Okay, uh, you wanna go to Ben first, and then we'll follow up with Gavin?
Thank you. I, you know, I, I do hear the, the conversation about tree plantings and fencing and those kinds of things, but, uh, we had also suggested an approach, uh, that I think, um, based on the hours of operation, or at least when outdoor entertainment would be permitted, that would avoid, uh, some of the complications with either, uh, you know, at certain points, you know, whether it's, you know, 49 decibels or 53 decibels, or if it's a, you know, sometimes atmospheric conditions can also affect the, the quality of noise, how far sound carries. I think it would be, you know, as we think about looking ahead, I would suggest to the board that they consider uh, using time of day as a, you know, it can be music between these hours, and if there's music outside of those hours, then that would be the, the regulating factor as far as ease of enforcement and understanding for all involved. Um, that, we haven't talked about that this evening, but I was wondering if, if the board or the applicant had thoughts on an approach like that.
Well, that's what I was suggesting, because I, I, I believe I put it in writing, and also I spoke of it the last time we met, about historically, when my, my live music took place outdoors. Uh, primarily Saturday and Sunday, always done by 5:00 PM. Outside of Bike Week, I do shows throughout Bike Week, but it's in, you know, during the week. It's just a, a one-man acoustic playing a guitar during the day. And then, uh, the evenings, evening show, uh, that, on the weekends ends at 5:00 PM. Anything beyond those hours is what we are talking about, that, you know, requiring a, you know, special permit. As, you know, that's, uh, why we're here also. So anything beyond the hours of 5:00 PM, if I was gonna go, and I'll have a show that could, could go, for example, end at 10 o'clock, because I do close at 10 o'clock, mind you all. I don't stay open till 1 o'clock, there's no noise, there's no bodies at the saloon at 11:00 PM, we're locked up tight. Although I could stay open till 1 o'clock, that's, you know, that's not how I operate, that's not how, that's never how I've operated. So anything outside of the 5:00 PM, any period of my standard music that I do on weekends, you know, I would have to get a special, a special permit, mass gathering permit, which means going before the selectmen, and as we spoke of in the previous meeting, that would be on a case-by-case, uh, case-by-case basis. case by case basis. And also obviously, if the performance was poor on the first event, there wouldn't be a second event. Because they have the control to do that. The control is in the hands of the board. Of selecting. Does that answer questions, Ben?
Yeah, yeah, to me, that seems like a relatively straightforward uh, condition of approval potentially to say, oh, outside music must be over by five P M. Unless it's a special permits granted by the select board. And that I don't, I don't know if that would meet the intent of what the what the boards uh, wrestling with here about the levels of sound, but it would kind of shortcut that conversation, just make it a little, little more clean to understand and enforce, I think. I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair. I know there's a couple of other hands raised.
I think Gavin was up next. Remember correctly.
I'll, I'll let someone else go first.
Okay, um, so what I was wondering about is I'm not really clear and I'm asking this question. Um, I'm referring to some notes that we had with um, regard to the first meeting. And um, it says let's see, Greg Martinez, owner at Iron Tail Saloon, explained to members that previous C E O notified him in two thousand and twenty that his existing conditional use permit from two thousand and eleven did not allow outdoor music and events at his business. And I remember we were talking about picnic tables and outdoor food and and things like that, so are we just talking about the the noise? The the music level, the the decibels, or are we talking about some of these other things? Like outdoor seating? Um, additional parking? Um, some of the things that we talked about in the last one, I I just, I just want to be clear on what we're talking about.
For the, for the update on the conditional use permit, the only part of that they needed updating was the outdoor entertainment. Everything else was uh, was in order from what I was told by uh, the code enforcement and secretary that they found it. You know, in their paperwork that I did have approvals. Also, I mean, there was outdoor dining prior to my, to my taking over the business. I don't know about, I don't know if there was outdoor entertainment, I can't say, but I can say that when I took over in two thousand and eleven, I started doing outdoor entertainment.
So you were having some music inside?
Oh, yeah, when I, my, my shows at night, I did inside.
Yeah.
And what I'm, and 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 what I'm, it it is not to be repetitive, but what I'm asking for is, you know, special permit possibilities for some bigger shows outside to bring some bigger name bands in.
And and what about the the conditional use permit for music outside? Are you, what is, what are you asking for for that to have outside music?
Well, just to be allowed to continue it as I've done. From from two thousand and eleven, I was, I was notified by uh code enforcement midsummer that I needed to, his words, I need to update my conditional use permit.
Okay, because that's what it's, that's why I'm asking the question. I just want to be sure and what, you know, what we're talking about here.
Sure.
That's all I have. Anybody else?
I I think John's had his hand up for a while, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay, sorry, John.
Uh, that's quite all right. Just to a previous question. Greg, I think it would be helpful just as a data point to send that video in um, for the board to to view.
Absolutely.
Data point, again, I think talking to your sound engineer and and maybe getting an independent reading is is or get their their thoughts is appropriate. Um, but I, I just kind of want to follow on Pat's uh, clarity question. In the memo you sent us on two February, you talked about your uh, usual business. Uh, the holidays, the Bike Week, the Saturday and Sunday, but in that paragraph, you also mentioned a Friday night. From, I think, six to ten. So you currently do or do not run concerts at night?
I have been doing it last, last uh, summer, about uh, August, I started doing some Friday evening shows from six to nine.
Okay, so so again, for clarity, um, the the larger shows, the one-off shows that would need, you know, the big improvement. Uh, that's not this Friday night deal, so you're asking us to um, approve your current process, which includes Friday night?
Right, yeah.
Okay. See, that, that's a little bit different than what uh, we had just been talking.
Yeah, so, yeah, I I, I'm so used to that, that that routine is different to me, you know, like I said, I started doing that, the Friday evening shows about midsummer last year. And uh, they were under the tent in the backyard and they ran from six to nine P M. But I still, I still contend that, you know, they were within the sound ordinance and they were, they were done at nine P M. Not that that's of any consolation or whatever, but I'm still within the ordinance and also you know, uh, worst case scenario, if that's, you know, if that's a a bargaining point, I put those shows inside, I'd rather not because my customer base likes to be outdoors. It's summertime and they want to enjoy outside.
I have a question down here from uh, Mike Demers. I'm going to slide the computer towards them.
Acting Deputy C E O Acton, um, I just wanted to propose another course for the board to consider is that you're you're considering the approval or disapproval of this conditional use and Mr. Martinez could potentially comply with the decibel readings, um, but not in 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 harmony with the overall nature of the ordinance where quality of life of neighboring uh, people might be affected. I just wanted to stress that, that that is still a consideration and should be taken into account um, in the process of this conditional use. It is not, let's find a way to make it happen. It's whether um, there are sufficient um implications on neighbors as well. Um, they do have that right to welfare, quality of life and um that shouldn't be under understated. Thank you.
Tom, I'll entertain any motions. Anyone would like to propose? Uh, Gavin?
If I, if I could just, just uh, add something. I've been, I've been operating the same fashion for eleven years. And you know, this was, this was a, a, a apparently something, an afterthought or 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 it wasn't seen earlier that I can't, you know, I'm not allowed to do outdoor music. Well, I built a business on on live music. And I get a lot of people from around, around the property lines that enjoy it, they come, they patronize me and they don't complain. I I mean, uh outside of the folks that, you know, are directly behind me. There's a lot of folks in town, a lot of folks surround me and I get a lot of support from them and and the amount of music I've done over eleven years, the minimal amount of complaints should speak for itself. I've got a, I've got a good track record and I do work hard to be a good neighbor. We had problems with burnouts last year. A neighbor came forward, came to me, spoke to me in person. And I corrected it immediately and my customers were more than cooperative and made it happen. I'm sorry.
Gavin, are you frozen again?
Nope, I just, I was going to make a motion to able this until we get the sound engineer's report, so to speak. But I see Dennis has his hand up too.
Yeah, I'll, and well, I have to, we'll listen to what, have Dennis come on. Then you'll have to unmute it.
Get the spacebar, Dennis.
You know, you're still muted, Dennis. No, Dennis, you're still, still muted.
Dennis said, there you go.
Maybe I'm going too long without talking. Geez, isn't that a strange thing to happen? I I guess it's just, it's just my opinion. We we have the decibels and the good neighbor policy for a reason. It was a standard that was set up to protect the neighborhood. Uh and obviously, uh, Mr. Martinez can't do any, uh, nobody can uh, any decibel readings until he starts up again. Uh, because there's nothing to meter. I I do know he said in the past that he had a uh, professional meter that he had purchased. Uh and Kenny had said the same thing at the time. Um when he started expanding on his outdoor music last year, like he did too, a lot of that was brought up by the COVID and the regulations from the governor and uh, which I mean, everybody was in a bad time. Um but I believe that the only thing we can consider uh it it is what's on the application. Uh, and it is to do with outside uh, entertainment. And if if he stays within the criteria, the decimal levels, um he's been, he's been a very good uh business for the town of Acton. Uh, he's done a lot of fundraisers. Uh, he's always tried to be very accommodating. Uh and he's given nobody any reason not to take him at his word. Uh you have to understand from my point of view uh I have always voted as a citizen not to have any of these places in town. I don't like them. I don't deep myself, I don't go there to eat. Uh, but I also do defend his right uh, to be able to do this because it's all been legitimate, it's been a vote of the community uh, in past planning boards. Uh, what he's asking for to me is more than reasonable. And I'll make a motion unless there's other questions that we close the public hearing and move on.
Yeah, uh, Jim, Jim has a question for us here. This team lead.
Can you hear me?
Uh, I can hear you.
Everybody else here?
Yeah.
I'm on iPhone, so I have a problem. Um, yeah, I'd just like to say that uh uh give you an example of uh, sound decibel. A a barking dog is about seventy to ninety. A rooster is anywhere from ninety to uh, hundred and thirty. And uh whenever these problems happen, it's, believe me, those, those folks hearing those noises are everybody's upset. Folks are hearing from tonight. Noisy noise, but the way they always get rectified every single time is it's never really about the animals. You can get through that. It's about being a good neighbor and working together. And uh you know, we, that building was um used prior to uh, before Greg got here. Everything Mr. Martinez has done is uh it's always been, he he lived up to his word. And uh, an honest guy and he still has, he still has some of an New Hampshire state trooper in him, you know, that he used to be. Wanted, he used to wander the parking lot at night, a couple times a night, check the places. He does everything, he runs a tight ship down there. And uh he's got several hundred thousand dollars invested in. He bought that. He invested that, he uh, you know, he took the time to understand what the ordinances were and uh uh, he's been a good neighbor. And I sympathize with these folks down there. When it goes to property values, I uh, within the last year, I did a uh I did a uh I I drew up a uh, an analysis on two properties. One was on Loop Road, the other was on Middle Road, right up back. This had, this place had no effect on that at all. Both of the uh, both of them had been really high. Elias could speak to that more than, more than I could, he'd be an expert in the field, but had zero effect on the value of the property itself. But with that being said, uh, you know, I just piggybacking on Dennis' side, and I sympathize with the neighbors. But a man has a huge investment. He's been a great neighbor. He's raised, he's allowed folks to live there, well over a hundred thousand dollars, just being a good neighbor. Honesty of the mind, her kids and uh, T T G. You know, veteran cemeteries, you walk through that veteran cemetery and you see the new walkways down there. A lot of that's because of Greg Martinez. So uh, he's been a good neighbor with a really fortunate here in Acton. You know, that's, that's about all.
Well, thank, thank you for the kind words, Jim. Um and that is, you know, what's factually true is I do love the town of Acton. I make no bones about that. Everybody knows how I feel about the town of Acton and I do want to be a good neighbor. And I really work hard to be a good neighbor and I will continue to do that as far as uh, the folks that border my property. I will be contacting the sound engineer. I will get and I will refer all the information to the board going forward. And I will take whatever steps necessary within reason to improve your quality of life being, you know, bordering my property. Because I certainly don't have any intention of upsetting anybody. My game is to make people happy and bring people together. And uh, I want to continue to do that and uh, all I can do is what I can do.
Gavin's, Gavin had a motion first, I believe, right, Gavin?
Yeah, so just a motion to to uh, move on to the next agenda item so we get more information.
Go ahead, here a second on Gavin's motion to table it.
I'll say.
John? John, did you second it?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Question before, question for the board beforehand. I I open April twenty ninth. And I have outdoor entertainment planned for my my daylight, my daytime shows. Um, in order to get accurate assessments of the sound generated and probably, and how to mitigate sounds. I'm asking that I, you know, I can continue to do that. And and so we have an example to work with.
Well, for
What the board's considering, that's
What the board's considering, that's, it's kind of irrelevant what is, within this meeting right now, Greg. Um, unfortunately. Um, and I think we're going to continue with the vote of motions of Gavin to table it for right now. And I think we were on a vote, all in, all in favor of tabling for this moment.
I think we're supposed to do a roll call, so I say yes. Chris, if you just address each member and ask them and they, they verbally say it's supposed to raise their hand, I guess this is what we're supposed to do.
Okay, I'll start with Gavin.
Yes.
Uh, Jim?
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand, Jim, if you're a favorite, table it. You can't hear. Unless we go to Dennis, I'll come back to you, Jim.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat? Unmute, you're unmuted.
Okay, I don't think that I'm voting tonight.
Yeah, that's right, sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, Jim, that's okay. Jim, we can't hear you, so. I don't.
He raises his hand with a, a yes, I believe.
Did he? Did you raise your hand with a yes, Jim, or? Okay. So, to be clear, we're asking Greg for professional documentation on the sound. And we'll table it before we make any further votes towards this.
Clarification, please. I understand the piece where I, I'm going to contact the sound engineer and, you know, put together an assessment to submit to the board. Um, but. There won't, there, there won't be any, there, there's not going to be a sample. Do you follow me? Unless I have a show outside. So this is where we run into trouble. Or this is where we run into a problem.
That's, that's really not something the board can consider at this moment, and no one's really telling you not to do a show.
Okay. Okay, well, I will, uh. Contact my sound engineers tomorrow, bring them up to date and go forward with them. And all this, you know, submit whatever they can offer. And I will also specifically ask about, uh, vegetation and how it potentially could help, uh, with, uh, sound buffering. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Greg.
Is that all? Are we? Does anybody else have any questions? Are we through, or?
Yeah, we're, we're all set, great, thank you. We're going to move on to, uh, new business.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
So just to ask, Joe Stanley, I think is representing.
Yeah, uh, new, new business would be York County Agricultural Association. Route one oh nine and thirteenth street, map two four one lot zero zero three. Site plan review application, application to create parking area for the Acton fairgrounds, and I believe Joe Stanley is. Representing the fairgrounds? Where is he?
Yes, I'm right here.
Yeah, everything was getting shifted around, so you're in the shuffle.
Perfect. Well, good to see you guys. First, I've seen you on the video, uh, capacity here, the Zoom meeting. Hopefully, everything will go smoothly. Um, so for those of you that don't know me, I'm Joe Stanley with Lime Pro Land Surveying. Um, I'm at this meeting on behalf of the York County Agricultural Association and the fairgrounds. And, um, to get anybody who hasn't been involved up to speed, we submitted this project. Um, right before COVID, you know, a couple of months before, we had gone through three or four meetings, site block, public hearing. With this project as a conditional use permit, and then, you know, everyone's world changed and, um. There were a few meetings that didn't happen, and there was some turnover with the board, and, and long story short. Um, Ken Paul basically said that we're going to kind of resubmit, uh, start over to get, you know, get a quorum, get a. You know, a, a board that was up to speed with all of this stuff, um. So we could then, um, you know, proceed to hopefully get a vote here at some point. So, you know, quick summary, the project, um, is basic, is a. The majority of it's on thirteenth street, um, right across from where the main fairgrounds are. Um, what we've presented is a, is a site plan, um, for a, a parking area over in that area with the, uh, long-term goal being. To, uh, over time, kind of. Uh, regrade the, the site considerably, um. And create parking over there, so we would no longer, um. Need people parking on route one oh nine during the evenings, during the big major fair events, um. You know, what we had discussed at that point in time, you know, part of all this, once the parking lot was finally put together, we would actually. Work with DOT on some signage to prevent people from parking out on the main road and, and hopefully can. You know, create a much safer environment for all the families who want to park and go to the fairgrounds, so, um. You know what, so what we're proposing, and again, we resubmitted this, um, on the suggestion of Ken Paul at the time. We resubmitted this as a site plan, who felt like this was, um, the site plan review process was, was more applicable here. Um, looking at the land use charts and everything else, this was a, you know, and a, and a loud use in a, in a zone for parking areas. And, you know, a lot of the work, you know, somewhat incidental to creation of that parking area. So what we've submitted is a, a plan, an engineering plan, grading plan, um. And stormwater runoff plan set prepared by the engineers over at Sabego Technics, which, um. Which meet all of the applicable performance standards for a parking area. To be constructed. Um, what we're looking at is potentially being able to create up to four hundred and twenty-nine. Parking spaces there long-term, but, you know, it will be a process, it's not something where they're going to go in and. And try to take care of all this at one particular time, um, as time grows. And, and what they're envisioning there for a final parking area isn't, you know, necessarily like. You, you would picture at a mall or at a store, you know, a paved lot or something like that. What we're envisioning is more like a parking area that exists now within the fairgrounds. It's primarily grass surface throughout most of the year, but those couple of events. When there are, um, you know, larger influxes of, of people that come to those events. Um, parking is created out in those field areas, kind of in a more temporary arrangement to allow for that parking to be. You know, basically anywhere else, else besides out on the road. So, long-term, you know, the vision for this area is to, is to, you know, completely regrade it, you know, make it more of a. A, a flat surface with some minor slopes to it to take care of the stormwater runoff as Sabego Technics has designed it. But, you know, fifty, fifty weeks out of the year, you know, most of the year, it would be. You know, a grass surface, a vegetated surface, uh. And then, and on the bigger events, temporary lighting, uh, temporary, you know, parking attendance and things like that would be brought in. To help keep organized, uh, an organized parking situation over there. As, uh, as those larger events occur. So again, you know, I guess I'm trying to make sure, you know, in my head, you know, I'm trying to. I'm trying to, uh, be cognizant of the fact that most of the board members, you know, haven't. Um, you know, we're just getting up to speed with this, but, you know, in my own head, I'm saying, going, okay, we've discussed a, a lot of these things multiple times already, so, um. You know, I'm happy to answer, answer any questions or get into the detail, you guys, all of this.
Yeah, I think, uh, Gavin has a question for you, Joe.
Yes, I was wondering if you gave any more thought to the concept of this being two conditional use permits, one for the mineral extraction and one for the parking lot, Joe?
Uh, um, I mean, I, I guess that's part of what the discussion would be, and early on in this process, um. You know, you know, I know things are very different now at the town hall even than they were at that point in time, but when. When Ken Paul and I were having discussions about all this, kind of during the beginning of COVID, and then as we started to realize we had to resubmit. Um, he was starting to look at this more as a permitted use in a zone where these things are permitted, and this wasn't. You know, he, he, he didn't feel that this was any sort of commercial mineral extraction operation that was going to be going on. But, you know, I, I'm sure that's a discussion we need to have, you know, at this point in the approval process.
Gavin, you have another question?
Yes, I was wondering about, about how many yards of material are going to be removed from the site in order to achieve this goal?
I don't, I know, I know it should be on record, we had discussed this before, you, you like to ask that question. Um, I don't have it on the tip of my tongue at this point in time, but I can certainly have that number. I can get it from Craig again, and, and, uh, Craig is the engineer, by the way, over at Sabego Technics. So, you know, if, if that's, you know, an important number, uh, we can either dig it out of the minutes, something the. Discussions we've had, or I can ask Greg to send that over again.
Now, you have a question?
Sorry about that. So Joe, of, of your, the, I think it's fourteen acres over there. That's on the plan?
Yep.
Um, how, I, I noticed that on the plan, it looks like a lot of it's cleared. Um, how much of the fourteen acres is not cleared? I mean, as far as, as the banking goes, as far as taking out the gravel, and would you be taking any of that gravel and just redistributing it on the property to, uh, make the parking lot?
I, I mean, there would be some onsite redistribution of that material, but there's definitely. You know, a fair amount of it that would need to come out to make a. Um, you know, a, a surface flat enough for people to park on, but you also have to leave. A certain amount of pitch just to get the stormwater to go to the two structures that the, uh, the engineers are proposing. Um, most of what would need to be cleared, I believe, already is, there's. Um, I, I think it might, it's shown on my plans a little bit, it's, it's apparent on the, uh. The grading plan provided by the engineer too, there's a, so there's. Currently, a, you know, kind of a stand of trees between the heavily cleared area and thirteenth street. Um. Most or all of that is intended to remain in place. Um, you can kind of see there's some curly or squiggly lines that denote where the trees are supposed to remain on, on the engineering plans. Um, there is one area. In that strip of forest that would need to be built as part of a drainage structure just to prevent. Um, any stormwater from leaving the site and entering, uh. You know, thirteenth street or, or Mr. McLeod's property that grew by, so maybe if you, if you look at my plan, right where you see, um. The tax map and lot number, kind of in the center of the plan, you can, you can see like a pink or a magenta area that says. Area required for drainage structures, that area. There would, there would likely need to be a little bit more tree removal, but otherwise, I think it's. Um, from a tree cutting perspective, will remain significantly, you know, the same as it sits right now.
So are there any vernal pools or anything like that in that area? That must be a low area if the water's going there. I'm just, it looks like a really nice plan, it looks really well thought out, and it's a great place, I think, to put the parking that's, you know, really needed. Um.
Well, I, I appreciate that feedback, we appreciate it, both positive and the opposite, but, um. So basically, right now, the, the, um, the water does. The, the majority of it that would land on this property sheds down the existing hills that are there now in two thirteenth street. Um, there are two, either two or three culverts that go under thirteenth street that, you know, over the years have. Have tried to alleviate, you know, any stormwater issues that might be there on the road. Um, the engineer Craig has identified those culverts as being a bit undersized, so. Um, he's developed one drainage structure shown in the plans, again, in that small area where we need to do a, a little bit of tree clearing. And then down towards the east of the end of the property, down towards the sharp corner down there, there's already. Um, a small existing wet hole that's there, um. There was a, you know, a, a limited amount of wetlands there that we did have mapped by, uh, a gentleman named Ken Gardner, who does a lot of that type of work.
Yep.
But the, the plan, kind of expand the size of the depression there. To help capture any other water that may come through. And then, and the future parking areas, um, would, would. You know, basically be built and graded in a fashion to divert the water to those two areas that were, um. You know, intended to treat it before the water ever reached thirteenth street.
So you're saying on the easterly side, you would be removing trees to increase that depression?
Um, yeah, you're, you're probably correct, a little to the east of that wet hole a little bit, and even that wet hole does have some vegetation. I mean, uh, looking at Craig's plan, it's not like they're, um. You know, trying to dig a deep pond there, I think it's about, the depression is two, two to two, two or three feet deep. Um, that they're just kind of, kind of create a structure there for the, for the water to. To seep into the ground after it's been captured, but, but yes, certainly, they're probably during the grading process of, of that, there. There may be a little bit more vegetation removal, you're certainly correct on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ben?
Yeah, I, I submitted a memo, and I, I think that was included in your packets. Uh, we were reviewing this as a sketch plan this evening. It's a chance for the applicant to introduce the project and, uh, for folks to ask questions, get a, get a sense of the, the project. Uh, I, I think most of my comments and questions kind of fell into the categories around vehicular and pedestrian circulation. I, there's, there's, uh. Uh, only, there's two entrances shown to the parking area, but it is a really long parking area, so I have questions about that, and how people get over to the fairgrounds based on that, move around the parking lot. Uh, and then the other comments I had were related to kind of the soil and erosion control concerns with the, uh, three to one bank at the back of the parking lot is. As that area gets excavated out, a three to one slope is fairly steep. It's, it's, it's about the limits of what you'd see on the side of a roadway. Um, and it's where you start to see guardrail on edges of roadway when they have three to one slopes. So it, you know, based on the extent of those three to one slopes, I was wondering if the applicant thought, uh, any kind of additional soil erosion control. Measures would be worth considering, uh, beyond the Lomond seed, uh, that's, that's shown on the plan.
Minimum, so it's well within the standards.
All right, and if everybody's waiting for, for my response on that, well, um. You know, at this point in time, I, I. Some of those items I definitely will try to address, but some of the more, you know, um, detailed or engineering, engineering-related, um. Standards in, in regards to slopes and erosion, um, you know, Craig is my favorite engineer to work with, and I, I, I trust him. Um, to have created a plan here that meets, um. um, to have created a plan here that meets um the Town of Acton's performance standards in in those regards. Um, and and so I have no doubt that that he he has done that. Um, some of the issues which Mr. Smith brought up, um, I have discussed uh once we got this uh feedback back. I I have had some limited discussions with both Craig, um, the the Acton, Roger Ridley with the Acton Fairgrounds and um Caleb Chessy, who who helps um over at the fairgrounds with with a lot of the various earthwork, earthwork and things that have gone over there in the past. Um, at the previous meetings, we had discussed um, once these slopes, these three to one slopes at the back of the parking lot were finished, constructed, loam and seeded, we had discussed, you know, planting either, you know, some na- some native trees or bushes, uh, things of that nature. Uh, the fairgrounds and Mr. Ridley, um, you know, stated they were still very much uh happy to do so to help stabilize those slopes on the back. Um, I also mentioned it to Craig, you know, you know, he 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 stated he was pretty confident in his design that most of these three to one slopes would not be subject to erosion, but in the case where a channel developed coming off the neighboring property uphill or whatnot, his suggestion was some form of erosion control blanket uh if if that appro- problem started to show itself to to apply something of that nature and kind of nip it, you know, once we see how the construction has gone before um the issue, you know, became a significant one potentially. And then um, I also did um, talk to Mr. Ridley, uh, representative of the fairgrounds about the potential issue, and what are we going to do if we, you know, if if there really are, you know, three hundred people over there? Uh, the people furthest away from the fairgrounds, how do we get them to the the proposed crosswalk area, the light, the gate? Um, and he was he was more than happy to to discuss, you know, creating some sort of yeah, like crust gravel walkway on the, you know, on the southerly side of the parking lot and the edge of the tree buffer that would be there to kind of keep people from wanting to wander out into 13th Street, you know, in an unorganized fashion. But, I mean, I, that was his suggestion that they would be happy to go along with. But again, they were you know, open to suggestions on that sort of thing as well.
Joe? Are there will there or are there or will there be parking in attendance during the events?
Yes, um, based on the, based on the feedback um from the uh the review notes that Mr. Smith gave us here, I did ask Roger that question. He said that, yes, there certainly would be. Um, asked him for a number. He was, you know, he he was brainstorming on the spot. He said it would likely be, you know, larger events like the actual Acton Fair. It would require five to 10 assistants to help keep organized parking over there. Um, and I also did ask about lighting for an event large that was larger like that. They had um, you know, we proposed putting one more of a, I don't want to call it a permanent light because it will be on a switch, but where where the anticipated pedestrian crossing of 13th Street would be, they plan on mounting a a light to that pole to have, you know, a one, you know, sort of permanent structure they can turn on on demand, and then um, as they've done in the past, in the on the parking area on the other side of the fairgrounds, the plan would be to um those those couple weekends a year when when there was a larger crowd expected, they would be renting those portable light units that would be suitable for something like this.
Dave Gavin?
Yes, I would suggest that we schedule a site walk so people can get an idea for the scale of the project on the ground.
Is that something that the board usually votes on, or is that is that a motion, or is that something the board would just kind of find consensus on? I I'm used to seeing that that kind of thing around decisions around sidewalks and uh, public hearings and those kinds of things be motions and votes.
I'm pretty sure it's required in this case, given the scale of the activity, but I can make a motion. I make a motion that we have a site walk. Um, but I was hoping for discussion as to when the board would like to do it.
Could I get a second on that motion? And then Dennis, I guess, is, do you have a question, Dennis?
Or is he seconding it?
Oh, you're seconding it. You're on mute again.
Dennis, push the spacebar.
So, again.
Try holding the thing down.
Yeah, that doesn't seem to work.
It's still not working.
How's that?
Perfect.
Yeah, somebody's got to let me back in, I guess, or something. I don't know. Uh, I was just gonna say, I mean Gavin's motion, that was all. Um, but I assume, I thought I heard that John already did, so.
Yes, uh, all in favor of a site walk?
You gotta do a roll call vote on that, Chris. On Zoom meetings, you always have to do roll call votes.
Well, we'll start with you, Dennis, before you mute yourself out again.
All right.
Uh, hold on. John, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, um, I certainly have to vote on that. Uh, do we discuss now the when? Do it before we vote?
And, I guess.
I mean, I don't know. I I only bring that up because um, the one I one or two I've done previously were Saturday, this Saturday, I'm not available.
Well, we can, do you want to? We can vote on it, and then we can discuss when we want to do a site walk, so.
Okay. I just.
Yeah, loses technology skill. Are you, Dennis, are you in favor for a site walk?
Yes.
Uh, okay, we'll go to Jim?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes. Yes.
John?
Yep.
Okay. So, when would everybody be available for a site walk? I mean, I could use the exercise too, so I'm in favor. Just as long as it's low impact.
I'm open to what anybody else wants.
Yeah, I'm I'm pretty flexible. I mean, anyone have it? You want to schedule it right before the next meeting? Everybody's needs.
Fine with me.
My question is, um, let me check. I lost all my. Want to do it on April fif- was it fifteen? That that'd be the next meeting, right?
No.
Yeah. We can do it at uh five o'clock. Does that be fair? Does that work? Yeah, you're near.
I'm all set with it.
Yeah, uh, Jim? Yeah, Jim. Time, is that, Jim, is that what you're asking him, what time? Five?
Yeah, five o'clock.
Does this five o'clock on the fifteenth work for the applicant?
Does that work for you, Joe?
I do.
What was that? Does the board need any more documentation before we move forward on this or the site walk?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right. Um, if I understand um, Ben's recommendation on this uh deal, uh, if I read it correctly, uh, what we need tonight is to uh accept the sketch plan. And that's the first process we need to follow. So I would make a motion uh to accept the sketch plan uh for the fairgrounds uh application.
Is there a second on this?
I'll second that.
With no additional documentation, Dennis?
Not not at this time.
It's it's just a sketch plan, so.
Right. You're just accepting it. That's all you're doing. Not approving anything. You're just accepting it.
So all in favor of Dennis's motion? Gavin, you second? Jim, sec? Jim's got a question, I think, or is he seconding? I mean, I think you're.
Jim, hear you, Chris. I'm sorry.
I'm trying to get Jim to.
All right.
I can see his lips moving, but nothing's, um, nothing's coming out. You might not have to see, you might have to send some smoke signals, Jim.
Jim, try unplugging your headphones and plugging them back in again.
Nothing yet.
I'll second the motion.
Gavin's second. All in favor? Oh, sorry, Dennis?
Yes.
Jim? Thumbs up? Gavin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. So the site walk would be April fifteenth at five. Prove this sketch. I think we're good. Are we gonna open up to public comment or? During next meeting? I think Dennis has something.
I I I got, can you still hear me?
Yeah, yeah, you haven't muted yourself out like.
All right, there's 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 two things I'd like to do here. There's one ask that we do not do another Zoom meeting. If it absolutely does not work, you cannot hear half the people that are talking. Um, and these are public proceedings, and the public does have the right to um, hear all the conversation and and things like that, and it just doesn't work, not for these things especially. And with that being said, uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We get a second on Dennis's motion. Jim, give them the piece nine and John. Uh, journey? Uh, Dennis?
Yes.
Jim? Thumbs up. Yep. Gavin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate it.